Good.
All right, I'll call this for the selectmen's meeting to order for Wednesday, March 25th, 2020. This is an emergency meeting. Thank you, everyone, for joining us tonight. We hope this meeting's live stream will reach you with success and be informative. The last couple of weeks have presented some new challenges for us to respond to, and we would like to both provide you with information about how we have modified our services in response to COVID-19 and discuss the actions we can take as a community to support one another and minimize the opportunity for community spread. Read off some ground rules. All board members will acknowledge roll call. All in-person meeting participants will introduce themselves. This will be a discussion of the board of selectmen and not a dialogue with those viewing virtually. This meeting is being recorded and will be made available on the town website and also YouTube. Any questions asked in the text display will be answered and available as soon as possible, but not during the meeting. Items to discuss tonight are EMA ordinance and EOP, EOC and ICS shirts, our communication plan, and a consideration for a local state of emergency. I'll now begin with roll call. Eric Gasperini.
Phil Crossman.
Pam Alley.
Jake Thompson.
Donald Poole.
We also have Andrew Doort, town manager, and I will ask the other members, other people in this room, to please identify themselves.
Gabe McPhail, town of Vinalhaven.
Jen Desmond, public health officer, nurse practitioner, clinical director at Island's Community Medical Center.
Carrie McKee, ambulance director.
Mark Candice, by chief and EMA director.
I'm going to approve the agenda. I move we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
All those in favor, Eric Gasperini votes yes.
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 Motion carries. We'll go on to then COVID-19 community update. And I will turn the floor over right now to Andy Doerr.
Do you want to give the statement?
I'm going to, that'll be at the end.
At the end, okay. Perfect, so we want to go over the, I sent you guys an email earlier this week, or yesterday, rather, about the, just so in case you haven't seen it for a while, or recently, we do have just a few resources that are already in place or that we've created over the last week. Just to highlight that we, again, have some things in place addressing scenarios, crises, emergency operations, and so just wanted to give a chance to go over anything in the operational plan that we have in place. If anything came up, if there were any questions that you guys had about what's in there, what it says, it's something that we have been trying to update and will be continuing that process over the next year. So, the last time it was approved was 2006. So, we started a revision a couple of years ago, and so that'll continue. A lot of what's in there would somewhat stay the same. There are things in there, like the contacts that are, of course, outdated, but in, just to give some reassurance, so, or kind of maybe even oversight of what's in there. It kind of lays out a plan or kind of a town steps addressing different types of emergency situations. Probably the most common one is a nor'easter storm. In there might also include, and this one that we have from '06 does have a pandemic influenza. What we don't have and what we're going to be trying to build out, and what you have a smaller version of tonight, as well as a communication plan. So, we want to, in that next revision, beef that up a little bit. I mean, what would have been in place in '06 for communications is certainly going to be a lot different than how we do it today. You know, so you'll see a little bit more about how we're operating now to communicate to people. And you're aware that we are, but just to kind of give you the process we've been following and just to kind of see if this is what the board agrees with and make sure we're in the right direction, how the board plays into any of that or wants to play into any of that prior to any official releases. So, in terms of the operational plan, is there anything that the board had, questions on that?
Does anyone have any questions, concerns?
No.
Okay. No questions.
So, the emergency management ordinance, which is obviously what's put in place that outlines kind of who for the town is in charge. It designates that, I mean, required by statute to have emergency management director. The ordinance gives the selectman that outlines that power to be appointed by the selectman annually. Mark, right now, serves as our director, me as a deputy director through the ordinance. Other things that the ordinance lays out, talks about those duties of that director, many reporting requirements on an annual basis. Talks about the town following, in establishing and following the NIM system when it comes, or the ICMS, ICS system, when you have to respond to a crisis. And so, it's something that was enhanced and really pushed following in 9/11. So, every town is expected to follow that system, is to bring continuity across the board, regardless of what agency is responding to a disaster. So, again, it just outlines that we have that. It shows who might serve in our emergency operations center if we have to designate or activate one. As we mentioned last week, we did activate, if you will, our emergency operations center for the sake of being able to communicate effectively. So, we weren't between different buildings, and so for the last week, at least three or up to maybe five of us have been working upstairs in the large meeting room. There's plenty of space in there to accommodate the five of us with the proper physical distancing that's recommended, but it allows us to think throughout the day on the boards and have fluid conversations, you know, and be able to communicate effectively. We've been meeting every, every day at four o'clock as an operational team. And so, after last week, we added, every day with us was with Gabe as the outreach coordinator through all of this, and Pat Lenholm came on as our information officer. So, I think that that, hopefully, you guys have seen some improvements in communication and being able to put out daily communications with folks. There'll be more coming this week. The other thing that the ordinance outlines as well, and I can expand some of this later on, is it talks about disasters and states of emergency. And so, it gives the power of the local jurisdiction, similar to how the state had declared, the federal government declared states of emergency. When you do that, it provides that jurisdiction with access to resources that might not be readily available or in a regular operating budget, because these are not regular circumstances. And so, it outlines, you know, how that processes goes forward. And so, the emergency management director would recommend to the selectman that we do enter into a state of emergency. The selectman would then follow that recommendation if they, presumably, they would agree with that. And then, after that, that becomes, again, a process in which streamlines access to resources that might not be regular or readily available through regular means. Any questions on, on that?
No questions.
No. I'm all set.
So, we had, I also shared with you a couple of kind of diagrams or organizational charts, if you will, one for the emergency operation center, which, again, is served more as a, it's called like a physical and organizational resource when you're dealing with, you know, anything that would require a response from many people in the community. So, it just kind of outlines people I had mentioned, in addition to Tanya Arnold Poole. And so, she joins our meetings. Eric has joined the two meetings this week so far, representing the selectmen, just to keep someone on the board and kind of in the loop of that larger conversation that we have every day. And so, then underneath that, we kind of had gone through to outline not only the person, but the role they serve and the duties that they're going to have to carry out, specifically to this emergency operation task or support for the, for the incident. The other, the other org chart that I had shared was trying to be more in align with the incident command system. That one is geared more towards when you're in a response phase of the incident or the situation. So, that one shifts more from support to the logistics and delivery of those services. So, that essentially is something that we're building out and being prepared for should we have to find ourselves in that situation. So, we're going through planning phases, efforts now to make sure that we have thought of as much as we can and prepared for as much as we can, you know, some of those operational contingencies, whether it's facility needs, staff needs, volunteer needs. You know, we're trying to be able to be prepared so we aren't in a panic state, if you will, when we see the need to react. Any questions about any of those that we shared earlier? I'll share, if you'd like, a little bit. I'm sure folks are kind of probably curious about what we've done over the week. Again, every day, there is an update going up. We're shooting to have that ready between six and seven every evening. For those that are looking for that, it's posted on our Facebook page as well as our website. It's generally shared in multiple other pages on Facebook as well. If folks have recommendations or concerns or thoughts about other places, we should be sharing that as well. I know not everyone uses and goes online. Share that with us, and we'll do our best to make sure that those are available in other forms as well. As I mentioned, we worked on, I'll share after the update, the draft communication plan, just so you're aware of how we're, you know, we are doing this with some process, some thought behind it. Daily updates. Gabe and Pat and a few others that they had recruited, if you will, for their team. We have one of our staff members that work down in the office, as well as one of the school's hourly staff members helping Gabe and Pat build and pull together the community resources and making sure that those are being built by, and the goal is by Friday this week to have that on the website. Could be sooner, but to have the resource list that they've been pulling together available on the website for folks to have access to. We've reviewed, at the last meeting, we talked about the possibility of looking to mail out from our property owner records list. There's over 1,800 parcels that are in there. So, we don't have 1,800 envelopes right now in stock, and so I'm looking at, I guess maybe throwing back out, we thought about, the question is, is it the most effective way to get it out? Certainly, it would reach everybody that's property holder, you know, but in the time that it takes to get there, you know, making sure that what we're sharing isn't, you know, it's reliable, static information, if you will, but this changes daily. I guess it comes back to, is that the most effective means to get what it is we're looking to get out? And so, we can review that and look at ways in the right pieces to put in the mail, given that it will be a few days later, and by the time someone gets it, it's likely information could have changed. So, that's part of that communication plan is understanding and, you know, putting the right information out through the right means. We have written a letter to the governor's office. We asked for them to allow the ferry service to do a few different operational things, as well as make decisions more, more simply, instead of going through a longer process. I had had the opportunity to talk to the ferry service manager today, as well as Bill Pulver, and it was helpful to have that. There are going to be, you know, they run a service as a state public transportation service. There's going to be limitations into some of the things they can and can't do, whether it's through the Coast Guard regulations or through, you know, state rules and regs. You know, they're willing to listen and work with us, talk with us, communicate with us. There's still a few things, I think, that some of the other islands, as we've talked throughout the week, as I've talked to them throughout the week, would be interested in still having an ongoing conversation. We've had a lot of people ask us, you know, why are we still having any and all types of trans, you know, people go back and forth for any reason? So, that is a conversation that we've had upstairs with our team quite a few minutes and hours about. So, I just want folks to know that we are hearing that, and again, the purpose of the team is to try and have some of that, think about the what ifs, understand, is this the best solution for now for addressing what exactly, for the purpose that you get out of it? So, to bring that then back to you guys, I mean, for you to have your conversation, but we'll be able to hopefully provide more context in some of the stuff we've thought about prior to having any definitive answers on that. As some, as probably many folks saw, the ferry service has been reviewing its service levels right now, and they are, as effective Saturday of this week, scaling back in almost every location, some of the services. For Vinalhaven, it goes from six round trips a day to four round trips a day. It'll be a seven, a 10:30, 2:45, and a 4:30 boat. The other islands, I think every island, Matineus had some modification to their schedule. The request to have the statement that the board drafted last week, and on the backside of that, we had included some basic recommendations that came out of the team that we've been, we had been passing forward as a one-pager, and we had asked if we could have the ferry service share those on the other side, on the boats, possibly on the vehicles. That direct request still hasn't been answered, other than to say it's still being considered, has to go through, again, a process, which is part of what the letter of the governor was asking for, is can we streamline this process and have the manager of the service deal directly with the island communities through its elected officials? So, that's something that I know there's a concern as to what they have available on post and making sure that it's not, you know, making orders essentially that are in expecting them to enforce orders that aren't enforceable or they can't do. I guess I thought that the statement you wrote and the recommendations we had were trying to be quite consistent with what the CDC had. So, we'll continue to ask and find ways to make sure we can get information out to people, and that is, I think, probably a good way while folks are on the boat. So, we'll continue to inquire about that. Spent time, you know, every day, the staff for the town, you know, check in with them, whether it's me, Mark, or Carrie, you know, so able to help monitor service levels and any change, potential changes and consideration and changes for town services. Having heard generally folks in the community and some of the concerns. And one of the things I think some folks might have seen is there's an opportunity for some to exercise some mindfulness tips and some stress relief type activities. And so, I'm having some of the staff, any staff that we have that are interested in participating in that tomorrow are available or able to attend that. It's just a way to help, help them. We've got a lot of just individuals, organizations that are providing services and businesses that are looking, how do we, how do we stay consistent with what the governor and the CDC are asking or mandating, as we, as we heard yesterday? So, the Mark, Carrie, and Jen have spent a lot of time face-to-face with different people and organizations and businesses, helping them navigate some of those recommendations. And well, what does it mean? How do we put this into place? And I think that's also part of the resource list. CDC does have quite a few different industries or sectors or types of groups affected by this and how they, you know, recommendations and how they could continue. And I think, you know, we'll reference those, and anything that kind of falls through the cracks or is hard to, you know, is it my this or that? Or if I don't see mine there, you know, we can have available through resources as well on the website from Gabe and Pat. The FEMA tracking of resources, whether it's supplies, hours, anything that goes into a response, for this process is something that we've started tracking. The portal is a digital portal in which we can put all of that into. So, we're navigating to get that up and running. And then, the other thing that we've been doing is, again, with all the questions that we have been getting, we've been pulling together kind of like an FAQ for folks. That can be a resource when people call at the office here or reach out to any one of us. You know, it's a consistent document. You know, folks have a chance to see that we've captured and heard what they're asking or suggesting, so that'll be available as well. Looking ahead for this week, I'll continue working with the other island administrators. Couple of us, again, to write another letter to the state, asking for some of the similar things we've had before, but again, to continue to work with us through the ferry service based on how the elected officials see and the community see a need for working with that service level, as well as getting better access to testing results. I know every community probably wants better access or quicker results coming in. We just wanted to put that out there, that there's been a few that maybe could come in sooner, or, you know, do we feel we're in a different position to want or need to know sooner because we're at the end of a road system? Other things that we could maybe do differently, you know, if, you know, if we had better access to the results. I think the message we're trying to put out from our group is trying to stay ahead of things and provide consistent recommendations. And if, if you heard the CDC and the governor speak the last two days, the message has been act and respond as if it's already here. Should, you know, if and when a positive test does come out in the community, and the point that we're trying to make is we want to change how we're acting, you know, so we can start doing those things now, getting ahead of the curve, if you will, to try and keep it as flat throughout here as possible anyways. Continue with the daily updates, finalizing some of our kind of, I call them operational contingency plans, you know, if we need other, look at other facilities and other uses, or find other staff for things to have them put in place and kind of more readily available, if you will. So, we'll continue building that out. And we'll continue to monitor town services, staff, health, all of that. So, that, again, could be a fluid thing and changing, but we'll continually reassess how we provide services, how heavily we can continue to staff certain departments, so we can just keep an eye on that. Any questions on any of the, what we've done or looking to do, or things that we should be looking to do?
Yeah, I'm, I'm kind of flabbergasted to think that that request that we put that notice on the Rockland terminal and on vehicles in line in Rockland had to go up the chain of command for approval. It's not as if we're changing a level of service. When you talked to Bill Pulver, did you mention that request that the ferry service folks had over there for us?
I did.
Huh?
I did.
And what did he say?
They talk about the need to have, you know, it be reviewed, I mean, go through the proper channels for review to make sure it's either consistent or, you know, legal for that matter. I mean, I guess when we sent it, I guess I was under the impression that it wasn't pretty straightforward. You know, can we do it or can't we do it at least? I fully expect, didn't expect to have them placed under windshields or wipers, you know, but at least available on the boats and in the terminals, I guess I assumed would be reasonable.
My understanding is that recommendations have to go up the chain of command if they affect the quality of service or the frequency of service or anything for that matter having to do with service. But this is really surprising, given the state of an emergency, that it hasn't moved more quickly. I'm not suggesting that there's anything we can do about it, but I'm really surprised that there haven't been more quorums.
See, I just got back today, and there was no, there was no cars in line in Rockland, but there was no mention of any quarantine or anything like that, you know, to anyone coming back. So, I mean, it would be helpful, I think, just in case someone doesn't know.
We'll continue to see what we can get up over there, over there and on the boats.
Is there a consideration for a state of emergency at this time?
There is not a recommendation at this time for declaring a state of emergency. I don't know if you want, so I tried to put together a little bit about, you know, why you might consider it, when would you consider it, you know, just any disadvantage that might be there that we can see. And it really, so again, depend, really depends on the circumstance, situation, you know, what you're dealing with. This is so much unlike what, you know, if we were to, again, establish an EOC and activate a system like this, you know, but, so it really does depend on, you know, what the circumstances are. At this time, you know, one of the things it provides access to is resources, whether they're financials, organizational staff capacity, equipment that maybe you need access to and can't, you don't have in-house. And so, it helps streamline that in the effort, to the extent necessary, to prevent loss of life, stabilize incidents, or mobilize loss or damage to the public or private property. So, we're not at a point right now where we feel that it's necessary to implement a state of emergencies for any of those purposes. You know, that as long as the board is available within a reasonable timeframe, you know, should a purchase or should something have to be declared, you know, we're not seeing the need right now to have to establish or declare a local state of emergency. What the state has been doing, you know, is a little bit further ahead of, you know, where we need to be. You probably have seen some other towns or cities in the state talk more about it and go stricter than what the state's at right now. Portland yesterday did declare a local state of emergency as well and had some more mandates and recommendations. You know, so again, we're following that for our situation, our circumstance. We do communicate with Jen, you know, looking at the medical center. So, we feel we're at least in tune, and as long as the information is provided to us in a timely manner, we feel we're able to react in a reasonable manner. So, at this time, I don't, there's not a recommendation to declare a local state of emergency, but it did, it has garnered a lot of discussion amongst our group. Sure. Mark?
Mark? I guess one thing we talked about was the timeliness that we could get a hold of you. I know you've been involved in some of those discussions, but it'd be nice to know, like, is it a three-hour window? Is it a four-hour window? Is it a day window? Or what would be if things start evolving? We would like, as a EOC or as emergency management director, I'd like to have some kind of a timeframe to say, okay, I should be able to get a hold of the select ward in three hours, but, or whatever time you guys think is reasonable. If I can't do that, I have the authority by the ordinance to declare a state of emergency by myself and act accordingly, according to the ordinance. So, I guess I would just like to know what kind of timeframe you guys would be comfortable in setting that you could make a decision if something emergent, in quotation, comes up that we could plan to wait on, and if we could, as a time, and then say, okay, we got to make this decision and go about it that way.
How does everyone feel with six hours?
Well, you know, considering the fact that we all have our cell phones, iPads, et cetera, that, you know, we can pretty much be in contact with each other within a matter of minutes, really, or say after an hour. I, you know, I think we could meet fairly quickly, don't you?
I agree.
But, you know, an hour might, you know...
I know where I'll be for two weeks.
Well, no, no, but I mean, like, for what we're doing right now, obviously, this is how we would have to meet. I agree, Jake, I have six days, we have six days left on our self-quarantine. But, I mean, we would all be able to be in contact within an hour of what Mark's saying, and then decide how much after that would be, be able to meet. You know, I would say within a couple hours, we should be able to get a meeting together.
Do we have the luxury of...
At least three of us.
Do we have the luxury of declaring a state of emergency or making the other decision without announcing a meeting beforehand?
We would have to do it at a, at another meeting if we don't, if we do not do it tonight.
But do we have the luxury of doing that without giving the proper notice for a meeting beforehand?
We would do it, we would do our best to post it as an emergency meeting, but it would be an emergency meeting, meeting.
Do it when you need to do it.
Right. We mean, if Andy gets, Andy or Mark gets in touch with us and says, we need a meeting in an hour, you know, yeah, we can post online that we're going to have a meeting, you know, let people know that the meeting exists, but, you know, we don't have to post it in the usual places that we normally would.
So, yes, by ordinance, you don't have to post that meeting. You can, by ordinance, in state law, you can say, we need a state of emergency now. Because usually, these state of emergencies aren't necessarily, you don't have the timeframe we have with a public health issue that we're having now. So, it's like we have a tornado, we have hazmat incident, something like that. Then, in that case, you may not even be contacted, and I declare the state of emergency, given my powers of the law, that I can do that. It's definitely recommended that it goes through the select ward if we have time, you being an elected official. So, that's kind of where I'm getting the, you know, I don't see anything major coming up that would be like a, we need to do this, this instant that we'd have time, but it would be nice to know what kind of timeframe you guys would be available. Say we had to make some kind of decision that required some extra actions, not, not within our job function as a normal job operations.
I agree with Cam. I think within a couple hours, we could certainly at least get a quorum. If not the full board, we could at least get a quorum.
I agree.
I agree as well. I, I can be available as soon as needed.
I can be available or two, but I just have, I have a question. What, I mean, what, why just call one now and then it will just be there? Or, I mean, will it just freak too many people out?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think we're in a position right now to have to, I mean, we did talk about, you know, to the point you're, you're saying, Jake. I mean, to what end do you call it, right? So there isn't a, at this moment, a financial need or crisis, if you will, in responding to the pandemic. And there aren't resources now that we have to, you know, acquire or, you know, so we're still in that planning phase. We're still in, as soon as we realize that there's a need to really respond, presumably we're gonna have a little bit of a buildup time to this. And so we'll have the time, but you know, again, it's just, so no, at this time, you know, we, we did talk about weighing, it's just not appropriate right now with what we've been discussing.
So this is just another tool you can use. If you don't need a tool, you don't need it, but if we need it, we'll use it. So I think as of right now, we've, we've made the recommendation of, we don't feel as, right now we need it. Tomorrow's another day. We may be called here in the morning, but I don't foresee that in any way possible. I think, you know, there is a side of some people that when you say that state of emergency, it kind of heightens the, you know, everyone's, gets everyone up in a little thing, you know? You know, we don't see that it's necessary and just to, I think we can, as we've discussed, worry about that. Just to make you guys aware of kind of the procedures and now that we know what your availability kind of is and after act and can't get you in that time, that's, I mean, the chances of us not getting any of you in that time is pretty slim, so.
I agree. Just come down and throw a rock at the window. I'll pay attention.
I'll just touch quickly on the communication plan. If you've had a chance to review that, if there's any questions, let me know. As we get to the end, I know Phil had raised a couple, just kind of clarifying definitional, things about definitions that were in there. So the first step, you know, of course, is gathering information, whether it's coming from the main CDC, NOx EMA, the EMS providers, community. Again, we are capturing a lot of those questions that we're, that we're seeing. Some of our daily updates include responses to those questions. Some are being added to our frequently asked question list. So that gathering, of course, is the first, first step and of course, that includes from the selectmen. So the things that are coming up or you're hearing or aren't, think that's being captured on a daily basis, we're putting out the update. So we encourage you to also be in communication with us as well, if you're seeing something that we aren't putting out there. We do, of course, try to, you know, find information with accuracy and, and liability. And so we're verifying the information. Almost all of our recommendations are coming from the CDC, whether it's the state or the federal. There might be times where information is more directly available because it's more localized. And so we might base some recommendations off of that. You know, but we are trying to stay consistent with the information where we're getting that recommendation from. The coordination of information internally. So again, if we go through kind of our own review process every day, we meet every day as a team. And that usually gets thrown up there to discuss quickly. Before the meeting's over, we used to talk about what things might we want to talk about tomorrow and try and get ahead of and preparing some of that stuff. So we have that daily internal review process. And then of course, disseminating the information through the different means. And again, if there's other, other ways to get, you know, the physical copies out that are going to be effective on a daily basis, you know, let us know. The wind will serve more as kind of a static place to find, where do I go to find these updates? When there are things that can be put in there that are relevant and don't, aren't subjects to have to change the next day. For example, you know, we can also put those in there as well. But the website, the Facebook page really are our top places right now to provide the daily, the daily pieces. But again, if there's other places that we didn't capture through Pat and Gabe, I mean, reaching out and the other folks that are helping them on the outreach piece, you know, conversations with community leaders, with business owners, which individuals. There aren't a lot of media requests specific to what, what we're doing, other nonprofits. You know, so it's, we do have, you know, quite a few folks that do communicate with us and we do reach out to, through that, through additional means. But open, open for more on that. The phone calls are another way that information's gone out. There's been two rounds of local phone calls made from the EMS crew. I know, I think our representative McDonald also has some volunteers making phone calls to folks in our community or in her district. And I had, I think, a couple of staff members mentioned they had gotten phone calls from one of their volunteers as well. So we'll continue, continue those phone call banks from here. I think we're looking to do another one. This weekend, we were thinking of doing another round of calls. A lot of questions come in on that, again, whether it's about recommendations to do what, or someone, I heard someone might be delivering or we're trying to keep track of store hours, you know, changes to services and be able to provide that to folks. So are there any questions, concerns, thoughts about that process for communicating this stuff out?
Everyone's doing a great job.
Well, the goal that I asked you about, the number five bullet point there that says to provide information that can lower the risk of infection with the pandemic precursor, an avian or swine flu influenza virus. It doesn't make any sense.
So, so how I see this is, this is, you know, some of these goals come right from the CDC and in how you communicate to people and why you communicate to people. So our understanding, of course, of this one is that you're providing the information to lower the risk of infection. You're trying to get ahead of the opportunity for it to become. And so that's just one of the goals and why you communicate and why you have a plan. You know, we're beyond, slightly beyond that point of stopping it from coming here if we're taking Dr. Shaw's recommendation of act as if it is.
To provide information that can lower the risk of infection certainly makes sense.
Correct.
If that was the end of it, it would make perfect sense.
Okay, we can strike the rest of it.
Great, strike the rest of it.
Any other, I mean, is there any specifically about, you know, ways that you, you guys want to be more, the board wants to be more involved on a daily basis in the communication piece? Or kind of have an avenue to weigh in more periodically?
I'm, I'm perfectly comfortable with the way things are going with your daily meetings with this team and, and the opportunity to contact the selectmen whenever they, whenever the need arises is there. And Eric's attending several meetings on our behalf. I'm perfectly comfortable with the way things are organized now.
Yeah, I, I agree so. I think you guys are doing a great job and, I don't, right now, especially being, still being quarantined. But I'm, I'm satisfied with information that we're getting from you, Andy, on a daily basis.
Well, from the team, but yes, thank you.
I would second.
I am with the ferry service.
Do any other, do any board members have any other concerns or actions they'd like to consider?
We do it most of the team. So if there's any questions of, of them and more specifics, good chance to ask.
I think Donald was trying to cut in there for a second.
I was just trying to reiterate, I agree. I appreciate everyone's efforts and the communication's been very, very good. And I did want to bring up, do we want to address the question that was posed in the email from Bill? Has that been considered, that step? And I was wondering how the board feels about that.
Which one are we talking about?
The email that Bill Jones had sent to the board.
Yes, there were two, two emails that were somewhat similar that came out in the last couple of days, just to the, to the select board. I think you might not have gotten the other one as the person that sent it might not have had, didn't have every selectman's email address. But they were similar in, again, it's a question, as we mentioned, has been raised and asked of many people about, you know, ferry restrictions on ferry travel. You know, whether it be for freight or only, or for prioritization of freight, or whether it limited all, kind of all together. You know, to go back and forth for almost any reason. So, I mean, if we want to discuss, I mean, again, we spent quite a few, I won't say hours, but certainly minutes and close to a few hours anyways, talking about kind of weighing the pros and cons and trying to think of the what ifs. We've had people weigh in saying, don't do it. You know, so I know, I know there's a lot more word and conversation on the street about probably why and why not. But, you know, we capture what we're able to hear on phone calls and emails. So is there any, I guess, to what end might we want to have that conversation?
Well, I know we've made inquiries of, of the chain of command, right, about what, what, what opportunities we have to restrict travel. I personally can't imagine that we have the luxury of restricting travel to, in nearly any way on the ferry, given that it's an extension of the Iowa system. On the other hand, I think most reasonable people, if they had an opportunity to read that very modest objection that we're trying to get the ferry service to post over there, would in fact comply and resist the temptation to come out here and jeopardize themselves and everyone else. But we'll just, but we presumably have information coming down the ladder from higher ups about what our luxuries are. And if we discover that we have the opportunity to do something more stringent, we can consider it.
Yeah, I think the, one of the biggest things that we heard, you know, since the weekend and I guess recommendations we provided people, we've had more people asking about, what about just going to Rockland, right? As we've seen this thing work its way up the eastern seaboard and up into, up into Maine now. You know, I, I think we're, we're in agreement of, you first ask yourself and evaluate whether you need to make the trip. You know, is what I'm going after something I need to get right now, something I can have mailed and wait a couple of days? Or can someone who put it on the boat for me that's already over there, just ask, do I need to go over there for any reason right now? You know, and if you do, of course, the recommendation would be to isolate or quarantine yourself when you get back if you can. I mean, that's going to be the, similar to what we've talked about if you're traveling early on from some of those fewer places. But as it's, again, if we're operating as if it's already here, as Dr. Shaw and the governor talked about, you know, then the recommendation wouldn't change from what we had a couple of weeks ago for, you know, certain places.
Does anyone on the board have any?
Is the recommendation, is it? Is the recommendation if you go to Portland to quarantine yourself now or is it still the oddity state thing? Is like?
Any, any. Yeah, anytime you travel to and from a place that has a known community spread, that's definitely been the recommendation for the last couple of weeks. And if, again, we're operating under the assumption from, from the CDC and the state of Maine, is it to act as if it's already here, then they, that similarly would suggest and recommend that you do that even, even if you are around here. So it's right at a point now where they're recommending that you, you just truly ask yourself before you go anywhere, interact with groups of people, do I need to do it, you know, and to do your best in your part to social, to distance yourself physically from other people. And that, that's just a practice now that they're recommending no matter where you've traveled.
Okay. You know, if we can't get the ferry service to even put a notice on windshield, I don't have much faith in them considering our request to limit travel aboard the boat.
Well, follow up on that is didn't North Haven already vote to restrict travel? And I don't even know, like, how is that enforcement going? Is that even possible?
They had to rescind their order from, was that just a week ago, week and a half ago? It was illegal.
It was illegal primarily because they were making the distinction between year-round and seasonal people. Whereas we're talking about restricting traffic to freight and other necessities. And there may be a difference there.
The board would also have to discuss what is a necessity. There'll be, there would be, you know, discussion about what is necessary, what is not necessary.
Yeah, I did, when I was talking to Bill Pulver yesterday, I did kind of throw out with, with the governor's newest mandates on essential services and, and closing that public facing part of that business. You know, unlimiting things to essential services, you know, if that was some guidance, if you will, for the ferry service. Again, now the ferry service, if they were able to do that, would of course have to be asking every person going back and forth, is your trip essential? You know, and someone's gonna have to police that. But I did ask at least, you know, if that would at least provide some guidance in terms of, you know, should we get to a point where you do want to, you know, monitor or restrict certain types of travel? But is that a list you can at least refer to?
The other thing we talked about is maybe asking the ferry service to consider prioritizing, if not making a total restriction on travel, but prioritizing essential traffic. So that if there were 25 cars in line and only three boats, that fuel truck, the, whatever is deemed essential, again, you'd have to go back to the essential list, which is going to be another controversial debate. But those, those things deemed necessary, groceries, fuel, whatever it may be, would get prioritized on the boat. And those that would be in line would be moved towards the end. That was another thing we've, we've asked back and forth, so.
On the other hand, so many people, local people are taking it seriously now that the traffic is greatly diminished. I could have gotten on any boat today just by driving on.
Which is a good thing to see.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I guess the most important thing is voluntary compliance and cooperation from any of the individuals, people living here, businesses, organizations helping out. I mean, any, anyone that can, of course voluntarily comply is probably going to be more effective than any order that's going to require enforcement. So I think we've talked a lot about that and that we are seeing a lot of compliance and people voluntarily doing these things. And hopefully that is the majority.
The best thing that could happen is we have no cases, right? We've all done our job, no matter how strict some people think we may have been or not we necessary with the state or whoever. But if we have zero cases and zero deaths, perfect, right? I mean, that's the best we could hope for. So I hope people consider that and they, when they think people are taking over precautions or going the other, going the extreme of doing some of this stuff, so.
Well, it would seem to me that, you know, the non-essential things pretty much is just about everything at this point, except for having freight come over, fuel, what you guys just said. We have, Steve had some appointments. The first one was an elective procedure for the middle of next month. They called today, canceled that. So really, why would you want to leave Vinyl Haven to go to the mainland unless you had a dire emergency? You know, Pat is delivering UPS. He's, he's great. We've got the grocery store, it's doing great. I just think people using their heads would just say, I'm, I'm staying on, I'm staying home. So hopefully that's how people are thinking.
Anyone else have any thoughts on this topic? Okay, is there anything else to discuss? Does anyone else in this room have any comments or thoughts? All right, in that case, I would like to read a statement before we adjourn. I'd like to thank everyone who has been helping navigate the many changes we are witnessing from the wind crew that put out a digital version last week to comply with the recommendations about physical distancing to the organizations or individuals out there that are providing food and services. And to those who are diligently self-isolating or quarantining themselves, our appreciation of your spirited efforts is tremendous. A lot has been asked of all of us. We would also like to encourage respect and compassion for anyone during this situation. Isolating or quarantining yourself or family can be challenging. We recognize that. So if you can continue to be calm and kind while supporting those community members who may be experiencing increased anxiety or depression, it would help our, it will help our community become stronger. Please show support and gratitude for all the individuals and organizations in our community. We're doing their part, using safe practices and going above and beyond. You may consider helping someone in need. It can be something as simple as a positive phone call, delivering food, contributing to local businesses by paying it forward, or helping organizations provide services. However, we still strongly urge those who do not have a primary residence on this island to not come at this time. With the limited resources at hand in this remote community, you are almost certainly in a safer place where you currently are. If you have questions about, about this or want to see any of the information we have offered, you can find them on the town's website at townofvinylhaven.org or view the resource page in the wind. You can also call the town office to get more information about recommendations or available resources. Does anyone have anything else? In that case, I move we adjourn.
Second.
Second by Phil Crossman. Eric Gass for any votes, yes?
Yes. Yes.
Donald Poole votes yes.
Donald Poole votes yes.
Natalie says yes.
Yeah, yes.
The vote is unanimous. This meeting is now adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for coming and for those that tuned in.
Thank you.